I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Under reporter the chairman, I'm gonna wait if everybody's okay because we're missing two people for committee assignments because I don't want to necessarily, you know, assign something to George or Christine that I don't know if that's the committee they want to be on.
Could be fun, huh?
Could be fun.
You're right.
So I think I'm just gonna, because both of them said they would not be here until like seven in text messages just a little while ago, so I think we'll just skip over that. We did, in fact, the other day, we don't even have the same vote to pension, but I don't want to move on with those until they're here and, because we also found out Christine's like, "I'm on finance committee?" She had no clue. So let's, why don't we wait until the two of them get here for that so that we can do those and maybe get everything filled or maybe not. And if anybody, and also look at the list, I know some people are already on here, but if they don't happen to like that and want to change, then, you know, when we, when the other two arrive, speak now then or forever hold your peace and then you'll be assigned or whatever. All right, we will move on then to item B, and hopefully we can get this done tonight, which is Board of Ed Secretary position. Do I have any nominations for that position?
Are we voting on the motion that has already been made or do we have to do everything all over again?
We would have to do everything all over again.
Okay.
Actually, I don't think that that's a problem, but do I have a motion that we would after B that it's a vote anticipated so that we're in legal standing? Do I have a second? Thank you, Nick. All in favor of adding vote anticipated after that? Thank you, motion passes. All right, now we can do this because yes, we have to have whole new nominations because those motions failed because they were both ties. So we would have to renominate and re-vote on those, you can't just pick up from the last ones. David?
I'd like to nominate Shannon for Secretary.
All right. I have one, do I have a second for Shannon? Thank you, Jeff. Other nominations? Thank you, Jerry.
I'd like to nominate Allen.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Nick. Discussion. Does anybody want to talk? Thanks.
In watching the board over the recent months, I feel very comfortable in saying that we sit as a bipartisan board, and I don't think that that's true of every elected board or appointed board for that matter in town. And so to that end, I think it would be important to have a member of the minority party in the leadership of the board. I'm supporting Allen for Secretary, not because I don't think Shannon wouldn't do a great job, but I just think at this time it's very important to have both parties represented in board leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dove, anybody else discussion? All right. Hearing none. The first motion is the motion by David, second by Jeff, on the nomination of Shannon to Secretary. All in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Thank you. Now to the second motion, which was a motion by Jerry, a second by Nick, on Allen's nomination as Secretary. All in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Thank you. Motion is Shannon as Secretary. So you have to sign these things.
Get to work.
Yeah, so get to work. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Thank you, Nick. Do I have any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and up is our student board representatives.
Happy New Year, everyone. Hope everyone had a great holiday break. On Friday, we welcomed last year's seniors back to Massey, and they spoke about their experiences at college, and they gave, I got a chance to listen to a few of the former seniors talk, and they spoke about how Massey prepared them for college and life beyond, and they gave advice to students. There were 41 graduates in attendance, and this took place periods two through four, and 180 students were in attendance per each period. And Massey has also welcomed a new security guard, and after speaking with her, she was very welcoming, and we had a wonderful conversation, and her name is Caroline Obar.
I'm gonna carry the sports report today, so I talked to Coach D today. Our girls' basketball team won their first game Friday night, and if you see him leaving soon, it's because the girls have another game here at seven against Pop Rod. The boys' basketball is currently undefeated with a record of four and all. They have a game tomorrow against New Fairfield. Our boys' swim team has a meet tomorrow, and then our indoor track for boys and girls have three meets this week, so we wish them luck running. Also, if anyone saw the Polar Express train over there, I went to go speak to Ms. Waring today because she was ahead of it, and then she directed me to the student who was ahead of it. Her name is Megan Braywa, she's a junior here. She raised a total of $440 towards DECA and their Memory Matters Club, and it was open to all elementary school students in the town, so all three elementary schools, and then plus faculty's children. So basically, they read the book, they were allowed to take pictures with the train, then they were directed to the cafeteria, they could either do crafts, they were decorating sugar cookies, they also got to paint popsicle stick trains, and then tickets were given out at the beginning, and then as the story goes, bells were given out at the end. And Elizabeth and I are gonna head out, so you guys can have a fun time with the budget.
Thank you.
We will move on to public participation, if there is any. All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
And tonight, I don't have one there, so we have plenty of time to get into the budget.
All right, we will move on to presentations and the budget workshops, so we will, I guess, jump right into it.
All right, so we left off last time, we got through the 1,000 series, and tonight we have the 2,000 series and on, and...
Can you just reference which one? I hate to cut you off, which?
Yeah, the big detail book you have?
Gotcha.
Yep, all right, so we were gonna go in, so our first page in the 200 is for life insurance, and that kind of is pretty self-explanatory that it's $5,000 a month times 12 months, so...
Based on actual costs, yep.
Disability insurance, long-term, again, they have the detail, and it's really just $5,700 times the 12 months, so I think we're good there. All right, payroll taxes, and I have a number of questions here. First of all, Frank, or well, actually, Jack, is this just purely for Social Security, Medicare? Do we pay Social Security, FICA? I mean, FICA, Social Security, or is this, we just pay FICA Medicare for people?
Certified staff are not in Social Security, so we pay Medicare though on all teachers.
On all teachers?
Non, that's on certified teachers, administrators. For non-certified staff, secretaries, nurses, custodians, we pay Social Security plus Medicare.
Okay.
So depending on what group it is, will depend on...
Could you give me the total of what the salary is total for certified staff as opposed to non-certified staff?
We could run that. It'd be, it will be a compilation. It'll be a compilation, breaking down on the budget book, this budget book here, it will be a compilation of the, taking all of the object codes, starting with the 751110, administration certified, and going through and breaking out anyone that's a certified, which would be the administration, the teachers, the guidance, psychologists, and then breaking out and doing what the, who is getting Social Security, who's not, and then who's getting, everyone's getting Medicare. So it'd be a question of adding these up and then doing a compilation, we can do that for you.
So everybody here, though, it states here what, who's certified and who's non-certified?
On the, on the summary sheet...
On the object codes.
On the object code, in the budget book page A1, you have a breakdown of all of the, each of the object codes.
Would substitutes and permanent subs be considered certified or not?
No.
Would stipends fall under certified or not certified?
The stipends would be, painting, we have breakdown of different stipends, and I'm hesitating because I'm trying to think, where you have stipends that they're working within their academic field, which makes it TRB eligible, which would exclude it for Social Security. Whereas if you're doing stipends such as athletics, that's not TRB qualified, therefore it would not be, we would take Social Security out of it. So it depends on, there's various combinations, it's just not a quick answer on that.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, you said permanent subs are not, are non-certified?
Non-certified.
Okay. And how about student support unaffiliated? Is that certified?
Unaffiliated is probably not certified.
Wouldn't there be contracted staff?
Yeah. I would support not certified and pay your tax.
Yeah, so Darlene, student support...
Student support unaffiliated, not uncertified, unaffiliated.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm on A1, under student support unaffiliated. I'm just trying to determine if that's certified or if that's non-certified for the purposes of payroll taxes.
Yeah, it might be, it might be the student support.
That's not certified?
If they're unaffiliated, they're not certified.
Right.
Okay.
And so the only, the only difference would be is we don't know about stipends, because
if it's a teacher who's teaching, who's a coach, then they would end up having to pay Social Security then, or no?
Not necessarily, because you could have someone coming in that's not an employee that comes in and receives a stipend for doing an athletic program, and they'll get a $1099, so they won't have Medicare taken out or Social Security. So as they say, tell us where you want to go, you know, we can run some calculations on that.
Well, I want to verify that the payroll taxes that are budgeted are actually correct to what the, you know, are actually correct to what our liability is.
So finance staff, can we run something to that effect?
Well, yeah, I'm not gonna do it right now, but yes, we could, we could prepare that for your next meeting. Yep.
Okay.
We'll go through all the ins and outs and the various options that you have.
Actually, I'm kind of doing it right here, roughly.
And if you look at the, if you look at the budget history, you'll see that it is tracking up, upward. Last year, we spent $877,000, current year, you're saying $892,000, and we're saying $902,000 for next year. So it's a, it's a progression upwards, a logical progression upwards on the history and the spending.
Right, but the $45,000 for Chalk Hill, Medicare has been removed, so that actually takes that down by $45,000. So it's not $902,000, it's $902,000 less $45,000. It doesn't matter, but it reduces this year's budget.
Correct, but the percentage stays the same.
It's in the wrong place. One of the things about that $45,000, we had a conversation, historically, the monies for the alt ed have come out of special revenue, and there is not revenue there to cover the alt ed rent. So instead of doing that, this $45,000 was going to be reallocated to cover that rent for alternative education.
Wait, the rent is not budgeted?
It's in special revenue, is what it's been historically, and it shouldn't be there.
You use the revenue and the special revenue fund to pay for that, and so you have it as an ongoing program, and so I think Joe has an update on regard to possible revenue offsets on that?
Yeah, we used to get revenue when Project Realms there, and that was a substitute program. We combined the two programs, so it is not, it is not, I don't know why it's in special revenue, because it hasn't had revenue in, Mark might know, but it's gotta be at least four or five years that it's received revenue. We do have some interest from Newtown to send some students there, and we've started to generate revenue. Actually, I have one student kind of in the pipeline now that they want to, that they want to do it, and I think we usually charge them the per pupil expenditure.
So the expense has been hit to special revenue, so what's, what's offset it? Has it just been sitting out of the budget drawing credit?
You had balances in there that are now being drawn down, you cannot continue to do that because you don't have the balances.
All right, so I'd like a breakdown between certified staff and non-certified staff with the calculation because, you know, because now we think that that $45,000 is a savings, but now we're told we're not budgeted again, we've budgeted, we've been budgeting incorrectly yet again for now of rent of special education. What about payroll taxes Town Hall that has not had any actuals yet, we're budgeting almost $20,000?
Right, that one, it should be a zero. What that is, is the charge back to Town Hall for the IT, and that is the savings of $19,857.
Anybody have any other questions in there?
I have a question.
Yep?
What is the rent for alt ed, and is that gonna cover it?
It's $50,000.
$48,000 to be exact.
Forty-eight.
Remember, what year was it?
Yep.
That we were looking at the rent for, we almost changed places, Jim was the super at the time, so I'm surprised, like, we went over that, I'm surprised that that wasn't allocated, because we were looking at other options and everything, I can't remember what year that was.
Yeah, it was like five years ago.
Was it really? Holy cow.
Linda, if you go back on that, has it been in that same account?
It's been in that same account all along. We've had monies come in for tuition, and it's always been offsetting, but now the money that was coming in in the past, I mean, it's surplus in that account as well, the monies that were coming in are no longer coming in, so that's what's...
If, if we, if we charge per pupil for kids from out of town, our normal per pupil, is that, is that a revenue loss?
No, because we don't have to, we don't need to increase staff or anything, we can, we can accommodate the existing staff, it's only...
It would be revenue positive to do so.
So how many out of town kids do we have there?
Right now, right now, there's just one Newtown who contacted us and said that they had, they had some interest, and I don't know if that will then, you know, maybe generate some, some more.
I think this then is a key opportunity to look at other alternatives for the alternative school that's not going to cost us a rent money.
Yeah, alternative sites.
Like, think outside the box with space that we currently already have that wouldn't, we have a contract with that, I mean, I don't know if we...
Through to the end of the year, yeah. Next fiscal, we could make a change.
End of school year.
Or whatever, because it was longer than a one-year contract originally.
No, it's usually just a one-year contract.
Is it just a one-year?
Right.
So if that ends at the end of the school year, maybe there, maybe we don't need to renew that?
Mm-hmm, agreed.
Yeah, I, I remember Jim was looking into it, and at the time, when he looked into it, there wasn't any options, really.
For space on for the ed?
It is something we can look into, though. We've had some initial discussions about it, it's definitely something we can pursue further.
How many students are in the program, approximately?
Jake, do you know the total you have right now at alt ed, or Mark?
It's supposed to be between 12 and 18 over the course of the year, right now, I can go right around 15.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know that we're at St. Jude's? It used to be a long, long time ago, was like in the eighties, I think, early eighties, it was like in that building behind Monroe Elementary. What is in there now?
IT, yeah, it's loaded, it would, it's one of our most expensive sites because of the fiber and all the servers in there. It's loaded with IT equipment, and that's where all the IT personnel are housed as well.
What about St. Jude's?
You would still have a rent issue there.
Yeah, but maybe not as much.
I mean, that is a possibility.
I mean, they got the classrooms.
They certainly do.
Mm-hmm, that's something we could look into.
I, I actually will take care of that myself.
Donna, would that go back to the question that you and I talked about with St. Jude?
Yeah, but again, that's still a separate...
Exclusivity, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I can take care of that. Unless there was a place that was completely rent free, Jack, did you have anything in mind here?
Well, we've had, we, it's, you know, given the fiscal demands we have, we're looking at some alternatives in district. Are they ideal? No. But are they possibilities? They could be. There's some, we could potentially work something out in district and not have the rent there.
How much space do you need and how many classrooms?
I think it's...
Four.
Two full classrooms plus...
Two full classrooms that fit how many people?
The classrooms at St. Jude's would fit them fine.
So you would need two of those classrooms?
Two of those classrooms.
Joe, we're operating with the intervention also.
That's what I was gonna say, we have the intervention room, which is a smaller classroom, an office, and then a conference room for the school, for the counselor.
So, I'm sorry, so you need two full classrooms, an intervention room, that fits how many?
Six.
Six people. All right, and then, I'm sorry, you need an office and a conference room?
Yeah, we need an office for the school counselor, psychologist who's there.
Yep.
And then we need a kitchen, we need a conference room.
Wait, hold on, school counselor.
The kitchen can't be Mr. Morris.
Sounds like an email.
Oh, it's, no, it's a text message that I'm gonna text right now.
So two classrooms, conference room, we've got the office for the counselor.
Kitchen?
Obviously, kitchen, happy facilities, restroom.
Yeah, they have, they have...
Office set up.
Office set up, and, I'm sorry, kitchen, and then the last one was a conference room, right?
Yep.
And what times?
7:30 to 12:30 is, 7:30 to 2...
Say 7:30 to 1.
Current usage is for 2 P.M., because we do intake after hours.
Okay.
7:30 to 2, only plausible interval access.
That, it already has that?
Security, yeah.
Already has all that? Okay. And you don't need it for the summer, right?
Nope.
And the earliest they get there is 7:30, or do you need it before 7:30?
Teachers are on duty as of 7:10, so 7:00 A.M. access would be preferred.
Okay.
They may need, and when I say gym space, I don't mean gymnasium, but they do have, they do have a...
Well, they have a gym, they have a kitchen there, they have conference facilities, they have bathrooms on both floors, they...
But they do P.E.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
They have office space, so, okay.
Right, so...
Actually, you could almost grow into, you could not advertise it to other districts, but there's a lot of, I went to St. Jude's, there's a lot of space in St. Jude's.
There is.
So you could, yeah.
If it's revenue positive?
And the finance council, and their finance council meets tomorrow night at 7:00.
Good timing.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yeah, I know a lot of towns have been looking into, Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, but looking into like more of a regionalized alternative ed program in the area.
Correct, right. And one of the things that can come from regionalized program is then you can look at some shared services for even expulsion programs and the like, too. Yeah.
All righty.
What are you gonna ask about that one?
All right, anybody else have any questions on payroll taxes?
The payroll taxes at St. Jude's were zeroed out, correct? Is that what I'm seeing right here?
Yeah, that's zero across the board there.
That shouldn't, that hasn't been in effect for, since St. Jude's closed. So everything is just dumped into Social Security, Medicare, we do not split it out between Medicare and, and Social, and FICA, Social Security?
Well, you need to calculate, Social Security, you have, you have different pots.
No, I understand that it's 6.2 percent, up the 2019 limit was 127,900, I think it's now up to 137,700 as the limit, you know, for Social Security, for Social Security portion of FICA, and then Medicare is 1.5 percent, but there is no max, you just keep going. So whether you make, you know, you know, $300,000, you know, it doesn't matter, there is no limit like Social, like the FICA, Social Security.
Medicare is 1.45, and there's no cap on it.
1.45 is unlimited, there is no max.
Cap on the Social Security this year, you're pretty close.
Yep, is 137,700, and that's at 6.2 percent. So probably a lot of non-certified staff wouldn't probably, very small number would ever get to that limit, so everybody would be paying that for the whole entire year.
Pretty much, yes, I'd say so.
But we don't separate that out between the two?
No, this is your chart of accounts you've been using forever, you know, that's your breakdown, we just built on what you've been using.
Okay. All righty. All right, so you have what I'm, then what we need to do to verify that account.
Yeah, because you do have, you have a breakout of the Medicare line items, then taxes.
So what I'm getting at is I want to make sure that these are correct and tie into what our actual payroll is, and that we are budgeting these correctly to the 6.2 percent for those who qualify for that, or just the 1.45 percent for just the Medicare portion? All righty, anybody else on that? All right, we will move on then to pension contribution.
There's a couple of things to note here on, on this page 91, you'll see a shift here, and you'll see at the top of the page, second one down, 752,300 pension, that for the fiscal year, next year, 2021, you'll see $419,000, but in fiscal year '20, nothing. And the reason why is if you go down below to 752,300, you'll see that there's that larger amount in the 20. So Frank has shifted the lines there. Frank, you want to talk a little bit more about the line shift?
Certainly, yes. In the 2019 column of the reactions, you see we only spent $62,018, that's where the town made the contribution for us and helped us balance the budget last year. We then broke it out between what we pay to Wells Fargo for the pension and, excuse me, and for the Hooker and Holcomb Consultants, and we broke that out so that it's a little clearer in regard to where the expenditures are actually, actually hitting. And then we've broken out the Paris Employers Pension Contribution, so...
And that one is a matching contribution.
Yep, yes, that's the employer's share, that's a match on that.
So can you speak to why it's such a huge in total, not for actuals, because I certainly understand they made the pension plan payment, but it's going up significantly, you're going from just under $400,000 to $462,000 from last year's budget. What, do we know what the actuals are for 2018?
I can call that up.
Like, that's, that's a huge jump in pension.
Linda could probably call that up right here, right?
Just for the one system-wide pension for 2018, on the one line item was 387.
Okay, 387.
So if you wanted to do...
So it's going to, well, and then, so if you look at it, that's going up a significant amount of money.
Mm-hmm.
You're talking... You're talking almost, you know, oh, just about eighty thousand dollars. Can anybody explain why that is such a huge increase?
Finance staff, is that to actual bills, or you're looking it up right now? Okay.
Well, I'm not looking it up, I was just asking a question, I don't know I didn't do this.
Frank, do you know on that, or do you?
Yeah, the, the, if you see the notes on there, Wells Fargo, we paid three hundred fifty-six thousand four seventy-six to them. Hooker and Holcomb, the consulting fee, twenty-two thousand one sixty-five, uh, and then other contributions for the employee. So those are based on actual bills that we're paying. And I, it's hard to compare to last year because we did not make the contribution.
No, I understand that, but the year before, we, we paid three eighty-seven, and it's going up eighty thousand dollars. Our pension, our pension contributions and payment are going up that much money? Have we got the current year bill?
Frank, have we received the current year bill? End of the year.
I think the way it was projected and what I can see is it's based off of this year with a percentage increase. That's, I don't know, we don't have an actual bill.
Okay, can we look into that, because that seems like.
Absolutely.
A tremendous increase. What was it in two thousand seventeen?
Well, can I just add one thing? The three ninety-nine, five forty-two under the note, then it says plus five percent.
Right, I'm just looking at the total.
But I'm saying, are we double counting? Like.
I don't know.
Should it just be four nineteen, five nineteen?
I, I don't, that's what I'm trying to get to, I don't know.
Sixteen seventeen, you spent three hundred ninety, almost three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that was, uh, three years ago.
Right, so it's, it was three ninety-five, then it went down to three eighty-seven, like, so it seems like it's all staying in the ballpark, and now we have this huge jump up to four sixty-two. That seems, that doesn't seem, that seems a little out of line to me.
Okay, yeah, we'll research that one.
Because even the three ninety-nine then still seems to be in the ballpark, you know what I'm saying? Three ninety-five, three eighty-seven, three ninety-nine, and then all of a sudden you have this huge increase up.
Sixty thousand.
Yeah, that, that seems unusual when you have a three-year average of just around the same amount of money.
Yeah. Right, so what's the extra sixty thousand for?
Right, right, that seems, that, that seems not to be, um, that does not seem to be in line to what.
There's nothing on the pension committee. Dave, that came up, anything about that?
The investments are doing really well.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, the returns have been very strong, yeah.
Right, so then that, you would think that that would lower your pension contributions if they are so strong.
Was Hooker and Holcomb always paid out of this line?
This is specifically regarding the pension, it's not for, uh, we were talking about this this morning, this is.
It's the pension and Hooker and Holcomb also, it's consulting fees for Hooker and Holcomb.
Consulting fees are being paid out of there.
Yeah.
Currently, and in years past, like the three ninety-five and three eighty-seven had.
Between those two lines, there's that, and then there's also the para, um, the paras are being paid out of that part too, I guess that's the match, right?
Yes, it's the employer's share.
It has the notes there too, Wells Fargo, the Hooker and Holcomb, and then the payroll piece for the paras, so there's three portions of it.
I was just thinking if the, like, if we were double counting something.
Right.
I was trying to get numbers to add up to sixty.
Yeah, we'll put together detail on this as a Q and A and bring it back to the board.
All right, tuition reimbursement, that's just the new contract that's budgeted, so if anybody has questions on that. Um, unemployment compensation?
Yeah, this is, um, educated guess based on history. Um, if we end up having a situation where we have to do RIFs, this will go up.
Frank, what is, what did we receive from the state? The state has already sent out their, the percentages of what the employer's percentage is, what is our percentage? Those have already been received. I know, because my companies have received them.
Yeah, but we don't operate like companies. Local government and boards of ed don't.
So the state does not give you a percentage that you're?
We don't, no, no. Um, boards of ed and local government don't buy insurance.
No, 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 I'm not saying buy insurance. This, so if you don't really, for state unemployment tax, right, you, right now, if you really don't have big claims, your percentage for next year is a one point nine percent of your payroll. That's what, that's what you pay up to your, the max to the state. Is that what this is?
We don't operate that way. The way boards of ed operate and the way local government operate, it's, it's a direct pay method. If the boards of ed and towns have an eighteen-month window, you are direct paying, whatever claims come in is what you pay. There's no one point nine insurance, and so if you have someone that leaves you and goes to work for somebody else, and then they get laid off from that new firm a year from now, you're still going to have a six-month claim come in and hit you. And so what the state does is they provide to us monthly a list of each employee, former employee, and how much they are paying. And it's a direct pay method, it's not insurance. And the only ones that can do this are local government, boards of ed, and some nonprofits. So the, the thing on the unemployment compensation, um, it, it's a guess as to what's going to happen. Uh, we looked at the actuals, the original budget, uh, and if, if, if the board makes a decision this year to make staff cuts, uh, this is one of the items that will have to go up. And then when they look at how much they're going to pay, they base it on how much the, are the earnings of the individual, how many dependents do they have? So there's a variety of different factors that they have, and that's why we're different than the private sector.
And how long do you pay that for?
Monthly.
For how, how long?
You have an eighteen-month window, when they left you.
No, but what, how long does the employee get it? I understand that, like, you would go back, so they would get eighteen months' worth of unemployment for you, from you?
Yes, they, you, they would go back and bang us for the eighteen months, and what, what they're paying for the employee, that's our exposure.
And what's the max, so is there a max of what, like, in obviously regular unemployment, I get laid off, I go apply for unemployment, there's a max. So it, whether you, you know, there's a max on how much you can receive monthly?
There's a max, and it's based on, as they say, a couple of factors. It's based on your earnings and your number of dependents, how long you were employed for.
Right, but is there an actual max? Like, is there a max, like, the max you can get no matter what is six hundred dollars a month or a week, you know what I'm saying?
Um, I, I'm not sure, Donna, uh, because I don't know how many dependents they'll allow you to count.
So if we can find out what the max is, um, what the total max is allowable to be paid out, because obviously they're not coming up to what their actual salary is, there's, usually the, you know, and I don't know how it works for municipalities and boards of education, but in the private sector, there is an actual top dollar match that the employer can, that the employee can get. It's not unlimited. So even if you're, let's say, a five hundred thousand dollar, um, a year employee, there is a top match of, hey, this is the most you can get.
Let's check with Labor Department, get an update and see what their current caps are.
Thank you.
Donna, also on that, it, from the twenty nineteen actual, it's up, it's about, what, fifty-five hundred dollars?
Mm-hmm.
So is that based on prior history?
Yeah, seventeen eighteen, we were at thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty.
So it was under budgeted last year?
Um, well, there's gonna be variance, this account line would have variance depending on who we're paying for, right?
Yes, yes. The, um, seventeen eighteen, you're right, we spent thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty, and in two thousand and nineteen. No, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, you budgeted, uh, ten thousand, so you had fifteen hundred dollars left over, minor surplus.
Yeah, it just depends on who is in that condition.
So it's, it's a hard one to get a handle on because there are just so many variables.
What's been expended so far this year?
Ten thousand four sixty-seven.
Ten thousand four sixty-seven.
So that fourteen seems reasonable.
Pretty realistic, yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right.
All right, this next.
Workers' compensation is next, um.
And Frank's got a handout on this one, so, um, there's a number of ins and outs here. Uh, you want to send that around?
Yes.
While he's doing that, uh, there's a possible surplus here of eighty thousand dollars, but, um, this line is going to offset another line on page one forty-six for, uh, liability auto and property, and that's what Frank is going to show you on the spreadsheet that's coming around. And, um, the costs are based on actual annual billing, so those are the things I wanted to share, and then Frank will walk you through the detail on that spreadsheet.
There's a number of line items, you go through the budget, you'll see zeros in a number of different line items. Kirma has consolidated a lot of their insurance accounts, and what I'm going to hand out right now are, is our latest bill, and we share this with the town, and.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, sir.
Um, the, the section that's highlighted what the town owes for the bill, and then we're the last column over, and you see where it says two hundred and eighteen thousand eight, two hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred sixty-six, that's the L.A.P. insurance. And you see, I've written in above that line, that amount, where to find it in the budget, line item five two one oh. So that's the object code. If you went to line five two one oh, you would find, um, that amount.
What page is that, please? Oh, I'm sorry, that is one forty-six.
Okay, so on page, page you're on right now is on page ninety-four, and that is account five two twenty-seven hundred. And you see it's the middle, it's called workers' comp actual premium. And you see where it's, uh, two hundred seventeen, two hundred seventy-three dollars, and I've written above that, look at line item seventy-five two seven oh oh, which is on page ninety-four. And you'll see in the budget, I boosted that up to two hundred and twenty-one, that's an estimate at this time. And the workers' comp, the L.A.P., and the crime all come from Kirma. And so you're going to see a lot of shifts in your budget, um, some are going up, some are going down. But if you, you look at all, you have to look at all three of those line items, and it, it pretty much is going up slightly over the current expenditures. It's just that what we did is put in the budget what line item actually is hitting, we try and tie it right down. And so with the handout I gave you, you can now see what line item we're hitting, and you'll see those numbers in the budget then.
Alright, so if I add that up, if I add up the line item, uh, twenty-seven hundred, the actuals for twenty nineteen, and I add up the actuals twenty nineteen for, you know, fifty-two ten, I come out to three hundred and thirty-seven thousand oh fifty-five. So then if I add up the budget for both of those accounts, that comes out to four forty-one. So that's an over a hundred thousand dollar increase over two thousand nineteen actuals for those two accounts combined.
But what I just gave you is what the actual bills are this year. We are actually paying this year four hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred and seven dollars. This is an actual bill I just gave you.
Alright.
And I worked off the current bill to do a projection for next year.
So why is there such a enormous one-year increase of a hundred thousand dollars in this, uh, between the actuals of twenty nineteen and this bill?
It, it could be a variety of factors, you know, depending what claims you had. Um, I haven't gone back and looked and seen your, I haven't gone back a couple of years. I've, I've dealt with what you're currently are being billed for these accounts, and use that to make budget projections.
We can research.
I understand that, I think that needs to be researched because a one hundred thousand dollar increase year over year for these two, you know, these two accounts combined is a huge jump.
Donna?
Yes.
Um, so this has, this shows four thirty-seven, right? But if you add up in our books, page ninety-four.
Yep.
And page one forty-six.
Right, I'm coming to four forty-one.
So it's about a five.
Four forty-one over four thirty-seven.
Right, but I'm, if I look at the actuals, the actuals are, you know, two twenty, you know, two hundred and twenty plus one seventeen as actuals in two thousand nineteen. That's the issue. The issue is that this is the actual bill for current year, four thirty-seven, and in two thousand nineteen, it was three thirty-seven. So it's a hundred thousand dollar increase year over year, actuals to actuals.
Although, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, as we go through the remaining pages, I believe there's a number of other lines that shift into this. Am I correct about that?
There, there, it feeds, there's several lines that feed into that, and several of those line items go down.
Right, you're gonna find that there's a number of, there's quite a few number of, of other lines that have been consolidated into this.
Yeah, they've consolidated, Kirma has consolidated, uh, a lot of their coverages, and so you get this one bill with the three different items. So you don't have a separate bill for automotive, um, you don't have a separate bill for the umbrella, you don't have separate bills for that, they're all wrapped up in there.
Alright, so what are those, what are those, so, so those are budgeted then at zero in twenty twenty, and what pages does those refer to?
Uh, if you will look on page one forty-six.
Yep, so one forty-six is fine, so one forty-seven, so that still has, so that's a sixty-three thousand. That's actual. So why would we then budget twenty-five hundred there for next year, if it's combined? Is there some other insurance?
We budgeted. We budgeted on page one forty-seven, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right, so what is, if, if it's all been consolidated, why are we budgeting anything there?
Because if you look at the bill I just gave you, you'll see that they list the crime umbrella. Uh, current bill is one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine. And if you look at the description on page one forty-seven, it finds your crime umbrella policy.
Alright, so what other account then offset, we'll, we'll see an offset for this?
Those three accounts I just gave you.
Okay, so that still only adds up to four hundred thousand dollars.
And then one, one forty-eight, Donna.
Oh, one forty-eight, thank you.
And the page after.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to get to, making sure that this all is correct then.
And, and you see on page one forty-eight, there's no budget in the current year, that you had an actual, uh, for vehicle insurance last year, spent four thousand five hundred. You see our notes that we put in there? It's sort of now included in the L.A.P. insurance, everyone see that note? So as we went through to try and simplify where this money is, we put little notes here to indicate what, where the money is now included.
One forty-nine and one fifty.
Those E and O and boilers and machine, those don't have the note, but are those also in L.A.P.?
The, yeah, page one fifty, yes.
One forty-nine and one fifty?
Yes, both.
And you had expenditure on page one fifty, one forty-nine, uh, you had it multiple sources, one forty-eight. One forty-eight was vehicle insurance, one forty-nine was errors and emissions, one fifty was boiler and machinery.
Is there an advantage to having it broken out instead of having it in one lump sum?
Well, we worked with how they're billing us for the coverage.
So you're matching the budget to the bills?
And, and, and I, we think it's very clear and very simple to follow. You see what the actual bill is, and we increased it about four or five thousand dollars for next year's budget, um, hopefully it's enough.
And, and that makes the, that should be enough because if I add all the two thousand nineteen actuals up and all those accounts, it comes to four thirty-one as a total.
And we're budgeting four forty-three.
Four forty-one.
Four forty-one.
No, four forty-three.
And you have to add the twenty-five hundred dollar crime, page one forty-seven.
Yeah, four forty-third.
Four forty-three and a half.
Yeah, if you add, if you add that, the extra twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
All right, does anybody have any other questions there? All right, we will move on to medical and drug insurance, and I think we covered that last time. So we would have our the handout from, from the first meeting.
Yep, we have Chuck Patricia on here too.
Yep. Does anybody have any questions with that? Because I think that pretty much covered when they did the last time what it was.
The only point I would make is that the figure that's in the proposed budget is ten percent. We're assuming that it'll be, it'll go up eight percent, plus for the regional charge that the state's now talking about in the Fairfield district, it could go up an additional four percent. The latest information we have is that it'll be two percent next year and two percent the following year. But I make this point because this is, could be a mover, one way or the other, in the board's budget. We have used a ten percent increase. Chuck, if it goes up to eleven percent, what might that equal?
So your projection right now, this year, your line item for the medical cost is about nine million, with the expected addition of ten percent, that puts you at about ten million. So one percent, if the state comes out and says, no, you know what, our base increase is going to be nine, plus the Fairfield County adjustment of two makes it eleven. Any one percent shift in what the state ends up releasing is worth about another hundred K.
Okay, so one percent roughly. So if it goes down, if we overbudget it, that's a hundred K. If we underbudget it, it could be an additional. And when might we have some inkling as to what the state's going to do?
I'm hoping we can get some kind of verbal estimate out of the state in the next couple of weeks. But historically, they have not released final concrete numbers until early to mid-April.
And last year, if I remember right, it was pretty late, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was around April twentieth last year before they finally posted the rates. Now, I will say that, you know, we've been pressing them for months, because let's be honest, who's in this plan? Towns and school boards. When are they crafting their budgets? Now. And we've explained that to the state, I mean, they should understand it, they're in this business. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's the state, they can do what they want. So, but, that being said, the estimate they gave us last January was eight percent, and that's about where it came down. So that's why I'm hoping if we can get some kind of ballpark. The other point that will hopefully help with it is the state went out to bid for carrier on the state partnership plan this year. So if they change carriers, which is actually pretty likely, hopefully that will be done. And will they move to a carrier with better network discounts and whatnot, which would then make the overall claims lower, which would mean the amount they need to charge is a little bit lower. So, but at this point, I think the eight percent estimate plus, plus the two percent Fairfield kicker is still the best estimate.
Chuck, with all the numbers swimming around my head, help me get to the nine million again. I mean, I'm looking, is that the, that's the medical, the drug, and the dental?
So dental's a separate line item.
Right, two more pages.
That's why I'm asking.
Medical and drug is one rate.
Gotcha.
Yep, that's billed together, and you pay that rate together. Dental is, is two line items. I know the way Frank had brought, I'm not sure how it was in the budget, but I know.
No, it's separate, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it is separate.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have another copy of what we previously gave the board, if you don't mind me, but one of the things that we were very conscious of this year was that there are other costs outside of what we paid to the state or to Cigna. But there's a whole host of other costs that we built in, and I'll just pass this around again.
And Frank, those really are fixed costs, what we're talking about.
Actually, if everybody has their book, the Budget Resources, it's in tab four, the first page on tab four.
Send the handout. And those are other costs for the retirees, for Beacon, consulting services. And we tried to capture in one place on this spreadsheet, all the costs known for medical and dental. And then we, then took that and then updated the employee contribution. And then, so we had total expenses, total revenues coming in, and how much we had a fund. And then the allocation of that's on that spreadsheet, what went to the medical and what went to the dental. So hopefully, a year from now, you'll be able to look at your budget and actually correlate your expenditures to your, your budget numbers.
All right, so I'm seeing what went to the medical in the budget is a seven point eight nine six. So on that little, on that tab four, where would I see that? Oh, yeah, okay, I got, I got it. So while we're in dental, so we're assuming a five percent increase in dental?
That's a good question, Donna. We spent some time on this today. If it's all right, can we go to page ninety-seven and talk about that a little bit? Because part of what we saw in dental is, there's a huge increase here. So we went back through the history, talked with Chuck about this. The historical looks like this. If you go back to sixteen seventeen, dental was three hundred and forty-seven thousand. Seventeen eighteen, two hundred and ninety-two thousand. Twenty eighteen nineteen, it was down to two hundred and eighty-one thousand. Then you go to twenty twenty, four hundred thousand, and budgeted twenty-one to actuals is five hundred and twenty-three thousand. And we know that the budget number for next year is accurate. We've gone through that a number of times. But the preceding years, we don't have good answers on the history and why there's such wild variance. We have speculation, but we don't have good answers. Chuck, can you elaborate any more on that in terms of the variance and?
So it's, it's pretty much the same story as with your medical that we talked about last meeting. Because you used to be self-funded for dental, it's going to fluctuate more at that point, and it's a harder number to pinpoint. Now that you are in the state's program, that's a fixed dollar amount that you're paying every month. So, like you said, what we did for the budget going forward, for the number going forward is, what do your bills look like now for actives and retirees? Because you're broke, you're building two different pieces from Cigna, and added five percent of those as an estimate. I'm hoping that we get word again on the dental side soon, that maybe that number could come down. Because when we look at the claims experience for the state, and we just got updated claims with data through September, for the state program as a whole, and the medical is continuing to trend in the wrong direction. But again, I'm sure they would hope that between the regionalization and the potential change in carrier, they can stem that tide. But dental is not. Dental's actually running fairly well on the partnership plan. So they might not need to give a five percent increase on the dental, but I think we're being fairly conservative at this point with that.
Part of the issue of the history, as you look back on history, you also had, outside of your Board of Education's operating budget, you had a medical reserve account.
Right.
And there was money being charged off to that medical reserve account, and that directly affected your operating budget. And then, as we discussed already with the board, that went south about three years ago. And so even though it was in a hole, it was still, items were still being charged to it. But that's one of the difficulties of trying to look back in the history and saying, why is it jumping around so much? Because you had this money off in the side, you had surpluses in that count, you were drawing it down to help balance your budget. Unfortunately, you kept drawing it down even when it went south.
Okay, so in dental right now, what are we, what have we expended year-to-date?
The actual is three oh two nine seventy-seven.
Three oh two nine seventy-seven, and how about medical?
Year-to-date? Four million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, fifty-nine cents.
Okay.
Be exact.
When we went into the Partnership two-point-O plan, we couldn't have broken out and said, hey, for medical and drug, we are in the partnership plan. But for dental, we're keeping it as our own self-insured.
You could.
You can't.
That's an option. But when we had done the analysis, and this is, Jack, when, you know, when you were saying, the numbers of like three ninety, those just sound low to me. I want to go back and look at the Cigna claims reports from the previous years. Because when we did the analysis, we took, how much have the dental claims been, plus the administrative fees on those dental, added them together, and we know what the state dental rate is, compare those two, it was basically a wash. So at that point, you're running on no risk by moving to the fully insured. If it was showing that the self-fund was going to be a hundred thousand dollars cheaper, we would have never had you guys do that, so.
If you could go back and do an analysis over the past three years.
Yep.
As to what is going on, because that is a significant increase. Because you're right, if we had known that going in, we probably never would have moved over with dental. We would have just did medical and tried to leave dental as is.
And, and like I said, that's definitely an option, you know, we never would have said you couldn't do that. I know there were conversations last year about pros and cons of doing it. I mean, there are some other pros to being in the state plan. One of the requirements employees have in the partnership plan is a wellness requirement. And one of those wellness things is to get dental cleaning every year. So by being in the state's dental plan, it makes the reporting on that flow easier. It's not worth a hundred thousand dollars. So, yeah, let me, let me do some, some look back on those costs.
And Linda, you said, did you say three hundred and two year-to-date?
Yes.
Yep.
But we only have a budget of four hundred thousand?
Right, because there's employee pieces that will be coming into that line as well. So that line is going to be overspent in the.
Clearly, yeah, if we're only six months in and we're three quarters of the way through.
There should be another employee, I mean, off the top of our head, I don't know, Frank, what would you say, another fifty going in?
Yeah, the, my financial report to the board last month, and I'll be saying it again this month. When you get the financial reports next week of year-to-date, you're going to see a one point seven million dollar deficit in the medical account, and a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars deficit in the dental account. So roughly two million dollar deficit you're going to see in the financial report as of December thirty-first. It's not as bad as that because this runs through payroll. And as we take out the employee contribution, it will be applied against the encumbrances, and it will reduce it down. And we, at this point, we're estimating that come June thirtieth, the encumbrance will be drawn down entirely. And then you'll see what your actual expenditures are for the end of the year.
Do you have an actual estimate at this point of what we're looking as a shortfall in these two accounts by year, by June thirtieth?
Yes.
What, what would that be?
I'm estimating about six hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Okay, we really, I think, for this current fiscal year, need to get an update as to what our shortfall is. Because we only have a four hundred thousand dollar hard freeze, and we need to know exactly what our shortfall is in total with everything.
We need to know so we can tell town hall.
What we need to know as to how we're going to.
How we're going to cover it.
Cover that.
Yep.
That's the most important at this point.
Yeah, we, we've identified, we've identified for the board already the major items that are shortfall. You have three hundred thousand in special education, you have roughly seven hundred thousand dollars in medical. You have that negative plug of three hundred thousand dollars. What we're going to be, what we're working on now though is.
Another hundred and seventeen thousand in transportation.
And you have a hundred and seventeen thousand in transportation, and you have a shortfall in your para account of roughly ninety-five thousand dollars of anticipated expenditures. There will be some, there will be some savings in other accounts, and we're going through those now, taking a look at where you may have some savings coming in. The problem we're having, to be quite frankly, is that you've had line items. And I'll pick out the medical reserve account, where you had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted, and you didn't spend a penny.
Not medical reserve, negotiations reserve.
Thank you, thank you, Jack. The negotiations reserve. You had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted, and you didn't spend a penny.
This current year.
That was used to balance out.
No, fiscal year on that one was, fiscal year for the negotiations reserve, I believe, was two years ago?
So right now, just your rough numbers, we're looking at a shortfall of one point five million dollars in this year's budget. Of three hundred special ed, seven hundred medical, three hundred plug, a hundred and seventeen transportation, ninety-five para. And we have a hard freeze that we think we're saving for eleven. That leaves us one point one million dollars shortfall that we need to figure out how to find one point one million dollars between now and the end of the year.
I don't think it's as bad as that.
All right, well, that's what I'm saying, we need to know what it actually is.
We all need to know.
Right.
That's what we're working on. And, and what we're going through though is going through the salaried accounts. We picked up identifiable deficits, but we're now going through the salary accounts and looking at what might be freed up in some of the salaried accounts, looking at past expenditures. And we do that going to January and February so that we, we have a handle. But I, I'm estimating your, your deficit will be in excess of a million dollars for the key, the key ones that we've identified. The transportation one of the hundred and seventeen thousand plug, and your transportation, there may be other items in there that would offset that. And, and since I was not here preparing your budget, I don't know the assumptions that were made in preparing your transportation account. And that's one of the problems of coming in and trying to figure out where you're going to be. I, I don't have your institutional knowledge of what assumptions were made in preparing the budget.
No, totally understand, but I'm trying to get a handle because now we're on January sixth. We have five months, five months and two weeks left for the end of the year, and to try to find a million dollars in five months and two weeks is going to be very difficult.
Yeah, well, fortunately, Donna, you said you spoke with the town, and they're going to help us out on the medical.
Not that much.
I don't, I don't know, I wasn't privy to the conversations as to what number you, you went over with the town.
They said they had a slight savings because what they budgeted for education costs, you know, the education cost.
Yes, yep.
Did not come in as low as they had budgeted. So they had some, they had some money there, but nowhere close to a million dollars you were talking to. Like, I think it was two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I, I don't know what number you talked with the town, I, I wasn't privy to those numbers, so.
Yeah, but nowhere anywhere close.
How much would you prioritize them getting us that shortfall number within the next couple of weeks?
We have to have it because we're five months and two weeks away from the end of the year. And if we have to find a million dollars in savings in this current year budget, that, it, it needs to be sooner rather than later because as far as we go along, less money we can find.
And I know they're probably working on clothes, and they're working on this as well, right? So which, which one holds priority in your mind?
I, I would say kind of both, it's budget and that, because how are we, not knowing how much our shortfall is? And what happens when we don't have the money and we can't pay bills at the end of the year? What do we do? We can't go over what our allocation is.
So Frank, how quick can you get us something we can lock and load with for the rest?
George, I wish I had it already. I, I'm very uncomfortable. I wish I had it already, we just, what comes first? You know, we've been focusing, trying to get the budget and taking care of a bunch of other things, you know, going forward. I'm hoping that if the town is able to help us out for that six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars on the medical, let me just round to seven hundred thousand for a moment.
We can worry about that.
Right. There's, there's no way that they're covering seven hundred thousand dollars.
The point is, if it's a million, if it's a million-three, whatever it is, we need to know what that is. Because then we need to start looking at.
Yep.
We need to start looking at what our, what's our contingency to that.
Yeah, George, you're absolutely correct. And we've started, we've started to take a look at that. And we're able to look at that as we went through the existing budget to see where your problems are in the existing budget. And that's been a massive learning curve, not only for myself, but for my staff.
Sure.
That have now been involved in preparing the budget, both payroll and accounts payable and maintenance. We've included them now in preparation. So I would say probably within a month, we'll, we'll have a, a much better handle.
Okay, so there's no way that the town is covering seven hundred thousand dollars in medical? It, that's not. That's not going to happen. There is no way that there was discussions as to a number that high. So we, if we don't find out in a month, we're now in the middle of February, and I'm just being realistic. How are we possibly going to save a million dollars in then four months and two weeks left in the fiscal year? We're going to get to a point that we're not going to be able to pay our bills at the end of the year.
And there's contractual obligations that we're forgetting about, too. We just can't sit here and think we can cut $1 million between now and June. We signed the contracts.
Well, and not only that, but how are you making payroll?
The, and this is what happened to you last fiscal year. We scrambled like crazy to balance your budget last year. We applied almost $600,000, we drained down your special revenue funds, we used the 10-248, we used a variety of different funds to help balance out the budget last year. This is, not this year, this is cumulative. And so we spent a lot of time last year balancing the budget, and the town helped us out quite a bit. As we've talked, they helped us out with the pension, they helped us out with the medical. And those were big, and those were like, those two items there alone were over $700,000. And then if you go back and look, I mean, this has been developing, this is not new.
Agreed. Okay, how are you going to get to what the end-of-the-year spend is going to look like within the next few weeks? Are you looking at the, what, are you looking at the run rate? Are you looking at, you know, what our forecast was, what our historic's are? How are you getting there?
George, you're right. We looked at historic's, but the next big thing we're now tackling is going into payroll and looking at payroll expenditures, looking at encumbrances, and looking at what expenses we anticipate coming in from now through the end of the year.
Okay.
So that, and that's a very tedious job, going through each of the employees and looking at it.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on here, right? We have a lot of wheels in motion here. But if this is, this is important, obviously, right? Because we need to be able to set a contingency plan in place then for the rest of the year. So how quickly do you think that we can get to what our forecasted year-end numbers will be?
The next couple of weeks, George.
Okay.
Okay. And my recommendation is, once we get that, it'd be good to sit down with the town and see what assistance the town might provide us. And your next year's budget is up 5.7%.
Just don't worry about the town.
Because
Worry about what it is that we have to cover.
Right. Because if the town says, you got your allocation, that's your allocation, that's what was voted on, that's it. They've already taken over a huge amount of expenditures and help we cannot count on. They don't have an unlimited supply of money over at the town to give us. And any money they give us is a special appropriation that needs to be voted on by the taxpayers of Monroe.
So what we need to know is what, there's no, nothing discretionary, right? We need to know what the absolute fixed expenses are going to be between now and the end of the year. Where are we going to come out, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because if we know that, then we can, we can back into that number somehow.
Agreed.
Agreed? It could be some relief by the town, it could be some, it has to be some stuff on our end.
Yeah.
And it could be something extreme, depending on how big it is.
You're right when you say extreme, because when you get into those kinds of numbers, between contractual obligations and salary, where you're going to go, you've already frozen all your supplies accounts, your pencils, your nickels. And that's all been frozen already.
Right, so to Donna's point, I mean, what, you know, it's, we need to know sooner than later so that we can begin that.
I agree entirely, yes.
Right, because it's January, and we don't have a handle on that, Nick.
Are boards of education in the state of Connecticut allowed to declare, like, financial emergency, fiscal emergency? Or, I don't know. I mean, I know that there are some towns who are now responsible to the Municipal Accountability Review Board up in Hartford, that Hartford comes in. Is there any way that, I'm not saying that I want the state to help us, that's not what I'm saying. But I'm saying, is there anything in statute that allows boards of education who are in situations as this to? Is there anything in state law?
The state law reads that the Board of Ed shall live within its allocated budget.
No matter how the board decides on how that happens.
And boards occasionally go over, and that's where dialogue comes in with the town. The board takes action to cut what it can cut. The State Review Board you're talking about has happened in three different municipalities in the state. Waterbury, Hartford, and there was one other.
Winston.
West Haven.
No, Winston.
Winston?
Yeah. And it's horrible, Nick, I hope you know what you're asking.
Yeah, you don't want to go that route.
I mean, we're a million dollars in the hole.
Understood, but now you're having somebody in Hartford come and tell you when to breathe.
I'm not, hold on, I'm not saying that I want Hartford to come down here, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that
What are the options?
We need to put
Is there an option?
I think we need to put everything on the table. This is not $411,000 anymore, which four weeks ago was a huge number.
I know, now it's 1.5 million.
Now it's 1.5 million and
And we're working on next year's budget when we don't even have this one.
Right, so I just want to be clear in what I'm saying. I'm just trying to explore other options that statute affords us, but I can understand that.
Yeah, the State Review Board's a very difficult issue, because what they do is, when they come in, they're given tremendous power. They can open up labor contracts, they can open up labor negotiations, they can change the whole ballgame.
Again, I just, I think that
I don't think you're there, I don't think you're at that point.
Okay.
So, but
Because the concern is that in order to get a special appropriation, the town council has to vote on it. It has to go out to the public for a town-wide vote. And the town people can say, no, we gave you your allocation, you need to live within your allocation. So we need to plan for the worst-case scenario, which is, we need to figure it out ourselves.
Jack, is there anything else that could be frozen? Like professional development or?
Even, we have a freeze list of $400,000, it's the lockbox, but basically everything else is frozen. The only difference is, finance does the review on everything outside of the $400,000. Everything within the $400,000 has to get approved by the superintendent.
What about professional development?
PD, we
It's frozen, anything that we're doing now, I'm paying through grants. So I haven't used any of the Board of Ed funds since the freeze happened. Anything that we've done with staff has either been contractual through the administrators, professional development money, or through grant money.
So when you do your PD, you won't be hiring anyone from the outside, it'll be all in-house people?
Unless it's paid for through grants outside of our budget.
Right, or we're using in-house people, teachers who are presenting, or secondary instructional leaders, get-by coordinators.
And the freeze also already has built into it $100,000 in maintenance, correct? So that's already in the freeze. You could also increase that, but you run the risk of things
Really, on the maintenance side, the things that are being done are the things we have to do. If we have discretion, we're not, we're not doing them.
Right, but you don't know if a boiler's going to blow next week, right?
And as Jerry said a couple meetings ago, if you have an elevator break, you have ADA, you have
Right.
A list of
You guys, we're only in January, I mean, come on. I mean, you know, how many more snow days can we have where we have to clear the driveways?
Frank, are you absolutely certain that you'll have a handle on this before you leave?
No.
My concern is, we're going to be bringing on a new financial director, and we're just going to drop this right in their lap
Yeah.
without, you know, I know, you know, your date is hard that you're leaving. I just, if we can't get through this
Yeah, we're going to work as hard as we can to give you the best estimate. Right now, I'm right around that $1 million mark.
And to be clear, this 1.5 million that we were adding up as we were talking through, that includes the dental?
That's medical is 700.
Does that include, does this 1.5 include the dental number? What was the dental number you said this evening that were in the hole?
302.
No, that's what we've spent
I thought you said short for 685?
Yeah, the 700 is inclusive of the dental, correct?
Yeah, 685.
We don't know what we're going to be short.
I've done analysis on the medical and the dental, projected out, and I'm estimating about 685 is going to be a shortfall.
For medical and dental?
Medical and dental, yes.
How much, how much of that is the dental? I think you said it earlier, I just didn't write it down at that time, when we were throwing out a bunch of numbers.
Well, the current financial, as of two days ago, the dental
And I just mean like the shortfall predicted for the school year, our year.
What I've done on the medical dental is taken all of your known expenses. Same format for next year. I've done the same thing for the current fiscal year. Taken every known expense, medical, dental, Benestar, Beacon, consulting fees, and then looked at total revenue coming in, the employees' contribution. And I have a breakdown I can give to you if you'd like.
No, I'm just looking for what your predicted shortfall for dental for this year. Because there's also the possibility of doing dental self-insured
No, you could not do that.
Not for this year, not for this year, but
But we'd have, they need to do, I'm sorry, your name again?
Chuck, Chuck.
Chuck. Chuck would need to do a full analysis of the past three years to see if those numbers that are in our actuals are actually correct, so.
All right, but so we're not sure what we predict our shortfall for dental for this school year?
I blended them together, trying to capture that medical dental as a package.
So 685 is the package.
685. Six eighty-five. Fifteen, 20%, max.
What is, Linda, what are the actuals through December 31st?
For dental?
Yeah.
302-977.
Through what period?
It's higher. From July through, this isn't, so I'm looking at through today, basically.
Oh, through today.
302.
Okay.
302.
Year-to-date.
Right.
So you have
Right? And we only have 400,000 budgeted?
Right. Right.
Right, so we're way, we're going to be above, we're going to outspend that line on them. But we're going to outspend it by what, 100K?
No.
150K?
No, it's probably going to run, if I take the 302 and I divide it by seven months is what we're through, and I multiply that by the five months we have remaining, you're looking at about $519,000
Okay.
in total for the year.
And the employee contribution?
Minus the employee contribution.
Right.
Well, no, the 302 is in that already, minus the employee contribution year-to-date.
The employee contribution hits that line, so you still have the next, you know, six months.
Right, but I'm just taking an average, the average for the seven months.
It should be able to hold about 90, and the deficit about 90 in the dental. That's my thought.
Right, about 90.
Okay.
Right, so you're talking about, you know, almost 100 grand.
It's 15%.
Yeah.
It is, okay. I thought based on how much we spent already this year with that amount of months left, that we were going to be worse off.
It's about 100 grand.
100 out of the 685 is dental, and then 585 is medical.
Frank?
Yes.
I know you've told us, you've given us warnings in the past about this. How much of this, what you just told us now, is new versus what you had previously told us about?
I've been flagging the medical right along as a major. We're, the board was updated last week that the special ed is hitting 300,000. You've known about the $300,000 plug.
Yep.
So you've had three, six, you're over a million dollars right there. In going through the budget process, the surprises came up of the 117 in the transportation.
Yep, you told us about that, yep.
Yep, so I've pretty much told you all the numbers.
When we got the update in October, the update in October
It just seems like a new bomb just got dropped on us tonight.
Was $1.1 million, and now we're at 1.5. So that's an additional $400,000, which was the last update that we were given on paper. It's a $400,000 increase since then.
I don't think it's that high.
It is, because it was the $300,000 plug, the $700,000 medical dental, and we were at $100,000 in special ed at that point, and it was $1.1 million.
So you picked up another 200,000 in special ed?
We picked up, no, another 200 in special ed, 117 in transportation, and 95 in paras, which is roughly $400,000. A little over $400,000, actually.
That number can keep going up.
Yeah. We have a serious, serious issue.
Depending what happens on special education.
When were we going to be told this? I'm tired of this. Excuse me, I got to get a breath of fresh air. This is not acceptable.
Donna, could we recess?
Can we take a recess? Let's take a recess, thank you. All in favor of a recess? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adjournment?
Meeting is adjourned.